I motion that we close nominations for president.
Okay, then we need another motion and a second at that point.
Correct.
The president.
Yep.
Does it matter if there are two?
No, so since Mr. White nominated, Mrs. Dunn, no one's seconded. So therefore, it can't go any further.
Oh, no.
So at this point, then, it closed the idea of Mrs. Dunn being nominated. So now, at this point, I need another motion to elect president.
It's a motion to nominate and then a motion to elect.
Correct.
Yeah.
Motion to nominate Donald Dickey for president.
Now, you second.
Second motion. Sorry, we're all figuring this out. You guys are learning with us.
And I learned that the meetings start at six. At six thirty.
Just the organizational, yeah, just normal meetings are set there. Don't be here at six next time.
I'll be early.
Kelly, can I help you clarify what's going on?
Sure.
Because I've been through this for like nineteen years of the selection of officers. You made a motion to close the nominations, two nominations. Now, you need to vote on agreeing to close the nominations. And then you take the vote for president.
Right, so I, okay, you vote for both of them, then?
Yes. They only need one nomination.
I'm sorry, say the vote is.
They only need one nomination.
Not a second.
They only need one, not a second. But now, you need to vote on closing the nominations. So you had a first and a second.
So now, I'm gonna do a roll call for Mrs. Dunn and a roll call for Mr. Dick.
No, you do a roll call to close the nominations.
Correct.
Then you'll take the vote.
Okay, take two votes, then?
Yes, because you've got a, you've got a motion on the floor to close the nominations. So you need to vote on that.
You need to vote on that first.
Vote on that first. Take the roll for that. And then, you will take the members' vote for, of the two candidates, who they want to vote. You take the roll for who they want to vote.
Then, then each person just says, "I knew that line for the election."
No, you just run like an election.
Any vote, okay.
All, uh, show hands or, or voice vote for who wants Amy Dunn or who wants.
Oh, okay.
Donald. Sorry.
All right. You didn't mess it up.
Then we don't have to check the legality of that. Okay, now I need the roll call. Yeah, we need a roll call for closing the nominations. Okay. Okay. Yep.
Just to clarify, I move that we close nominations for president.
Gotcha. We need a second.
A second.
Correct. Okay, so now I need, um, a roll call, a vote for you as president. And I'll take the nomination.
No, you need to take the vote and now close the nominations.
We did that. We did that.
You didn't take the roll.
Oh, okay, roll call, gotcha. So Mr. Alaboni, sorry.
Yes.
Alaboni.
Yes.
Mr. Dickie.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn.
Yes.
Mrs. Scowden.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Okay. Now, you can take a vote for two individual. No, just.
Just.
Correct, so I need a roll call for Mrs. Dunn as president. Let's see, if that vote turns into two, then I gotta take a roll call.
No, no, you just call each member's.
Oh, gotcha, okay, gotcha, perfect. Okay, so now, what do you get then? So Mr. Alaboni, who would you like, who'd you vote for for president?
Donald Dickey.
Mrs. Dunn. Um, Mrs. Dunn, okay. Mrs. Scowden. Mrs. Dunn, okay. Um, Mr. Dickie.
Mr. Dickie.
Okay, and then Mr. White.
Mrs. Dunn. Mrs. Dunn.
Okay, perfect. So we have three for Mrs. Dunn, two for Mr. Dickie.
Now, we have to have a motion to elect them as president.
Yes, yes. Right, so I need a motion and I will, yes.
This is all present.
Okay. I don't think, I don't think you're up here to sit.
Correct, okay, cut, so. So then, I need one second. Okay, so now that I need to, now I need a motion to open it up for vice president.
I'm.
Perfect, okay, gotcha.
Motion to open it up to, can I say Donald Dickey, vice president?
Okay.
A second.
Okay. I, yeah, we're opening nominations for vice president. April nominated Donald.
And then you should.
A second.
Second, okay.
Are there anyone who want to vote?
Any nominations for vice president?
I move that we close nominations for vice president.
I second that.
Roll call.
Okay, now we have Mr. Alaboni.
Yes.
Mr. Dickie.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn.
Yes.
Mrs. Scowden.
Yes.
Mr. Washington.
Yes.
Okay, so then I have Jacob to vote for Mr. Dickie as vice president. We just did, we're good.
No.
Good by default. Yes, got it, okay.
Now, we just need the over of office, who want the president and vice president?
Nope.
You have to raise your hand for me.
Don't, okay, yeah. I'll say this out a minute later.
Okay. Got it. Now, we need to adopt the calendar for the regular meetings of the Buckeye Valley Board of Education. You got a new motion?
Can we modify the schedule? Because I have a conflict with February six. Can you, at what point can we do that?
So we'll make a motion.
Okay.
And then, at that point, we.
I move a second.
And then, it goes to discussion before you roll call. Yep.
I make a motion to adopt the following calendar for regular meetings of the Buckeye Valley of the School Board of Education for 2022. Meetings begin at six thirty, and I'll hold Wednesdays unless the West determines by the board.
A second, man.
Now, with discussion?
Uh, we'll need to change the February sixteenth meeting to either earlier or later days. I will get on that week.
Me too.
I know.
So how about the week before, because we're having this a week early? The week of the.
February the ninth.
Ninth.
Well, it's our on-term, let's compete for the championship.
Is that during the evenings?
Yeah.
We could petition.
Is that, we can do it another day.
On Thursday, too.
You could do, so these dates, just so you guys know, these dates are tentative, they're dates. We'll publish them in the paper. But at any time, it comes down and we find out that we have something conflicting with the district or the members, we're allowed to change as long as we give the public twenty-four hours notice that the Board of Education meetings are changing. So something might come up and you're delighted, we need to change it, and that's okay. We just need, this is just a tentative date that, again, you could change, exactly, you can change it up twenty-four hours in advance until the public.
The week before is a Wednesday or Thursday? Better?
Certainly, we set it for February the ninth until Wednesday.
Until Wednesday?
Yes.
That works. And they're all in this room? How's that, are we broadcasting?
We are.
Equipment in place?
They are, they are live, we are live streaming right now. We have twenty-one folks joining us remotely.
Thank you. Is, are they recorded now?
May I record them, they will show up. It takes a few hours for them to render and be posted, but they'll show up on our Baron Tube once they've been rendered.
Baron Tube, okay. So this is the equipment that we agreed to purchase?
There is additional mics that'll be in place for your February meeting. Those are still to be installed, but then, by February, everything that was purchased will be in place.
Okay. So with the, just mentioning right now, the February ninth meeting at six eight times six thirty, you now can vote for these tentative meetings. So I would just need a roll call.
Yeah, a roll call.
Mr. Alaboni?
Yes.
Mr. Dickie?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mrs. Scowden?
Yes.
And Mr. White?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Now, we have our, subject of our strategic plan committees. We appoint two board members, a maximum of two board members to each, as a liaison to the Strategic Plan Committee. We have no more of two, so that they are not board meetings. So now, we get to discuss among ourselves their, these are, we need to change these.
Change.
Yeah, there are. We have four different ones, you mentioned. One is resources, which includes facilities and finance.
Carrying culture, student workforce.
Yeah. Carrying culture, effective communication, and student success. And what's interested in? Resources, okay.
Yeah.
That includes both finance and facilities.
I would like that one as well.
Jeff.
Is student achievement the same as caring culture?
No, two different things.
Two different, yeah, I'm sure. Okay, student achievement. You've already got two on facility, right?
We're just, we're wanting to, I'm wanting to hear what everybody's interested in, and then, if there's one.
There's, there's been two I'm interested in, facilities and student achievement.
Student achievement and communications.
You can put the other student achievement.
Looks like you can have three people, or do you?
We can only have two.
Two, because if you have three board members in the same place, it could, it could, it's end.
And you could have an alternative, like, for example, if you can't attend one, or maybe attend four you.
Okay. And so, I heard for resource stewardship, which is facilities and finance, I've heard April, Tom, and Jeff. For student success, I've heard Donald and Jeff.
And April.
And April. For communications, I've heard Donald and yourself, I'm interested in that one. And for caring culture, I'm interested in that.
You have to elect the other one, please.
And.
Sure.
You have to pick two.
Sure you pick two?
Yeah. Okay.
That's one. Well, caring culture is wherever, I think I'm on student achievement and the three of them.
There's three people interested in.
I'll, you put me where you feel like. Caring culture.
Caring culture.
Give me a little bit more about that, like, who, is this the, um, curriculum kind of thing?
Caring culture is really about one V B.
Okay.
It's how we.
Sure.
Um, it's how we are one Buckeye Valley and we're all, we're all working towards the same thing and how to include kind, respectful to everyone. That's caring culture. No, someone's, someone's gonna not hit what they want. Um, it's really, and then, so caring culture right now, it's trying to address, really get us all kind and respectful. The resource stewardship, the most important thing right now is the West in the building. Finance is sort of in good shape.
I just feel like I'm gonna have a lot of value with real estate on that and what's coming. And I just feel like I would really like to be part of that.
Okay. And then, Tom and Jeff, you also both wanted to be on it, let's hear what you, the resources and the building.
Well, one, my knife out on the resources, if the best way to mix the committee like that would be have one person who's been on and involved in that, and that's, I mean, more than that, just because there's a lot of old business along with the new stuff that we've talked about. So that's the way I like to, I, I think that's a good way of mixing the committees, is the senior person and you got a, a new, have a new, uh, new effect.
We'll be able to do a little bit of that, but not too big. What's your thoughts about resources?
I graduated in accounting and finance, auditing, all that, six years ago. With honors, I think that would contribute a lot to it.
So with the, um, I'm, I'm in agreement that April, you're in real estate, and our issue right now is growth and understanding what, whether service coming and, so, I mean, it's, we gotta work it out. You guys gotta work it out, including yourselves, but I, I agree that you should be on it, and I think Jeff has a lot of, you've been on the resource committee and have a history of facilities.
Yes, that's, that's my, my point. There's a lot of history there, and not everyone's familiar with it. If you haven't been following it in the last ten years, so, can.
Yeah, but I don't want to be all about facilities, though, either. There is, it's a shame that that committee's all one, finance and facilities, because those are two very important things to the district. So I think that, I think the financial side needs to be looked after as well. It sounds like with this duo, finance, the financial side would be not as cared for potentially. I do respect that you've got the accounting period, I think that would be valuable to have.
Well, there's many reasons for joining those two committees, finance and facilities, because they were separate, they were separate. And I always thought that made sense, because your findings, well, well, back, back in the day, the finance problems always seemed to be a lot complicated than the facilities.
Yeah.
Now, it's flat, or we've got our money in order, so it's just a matter of, I mean, so.
I would agree with that. I would like to see it split, just because, you know, when I'm dealing with real estate, I'm an expert in real estate, not how they're getting funding. So.
I was in that budget, too.
In that.
Commercially, and.
Yeah. Well, then, I think it makes sense to have, I mean, we can have that. They don't all need regularly, they need as needed, so we can, we can do that, it's okay, let's do that. Not any objections?
So someone's forgotten that four members to cover the committee.
Yeah, we did.
I think it's a big enough issue that we should, if we back with so many people that want to be involved.
Yeah. Yeah, we want to, we can make that work. So for.
Could be.
Then it would be facilities and finance. We can do that. Resource stewardship. So facilities, we would have April and Jeff. And finance, we have Tom and. So we can just have, I mean, we don't need that both, because I'm interested in two other committees. I know, I know the finances. Is that okay?
What about the student achievement?
We had, so, can I go run through? Is that okay, my run through with everybody, just make sure. Caring culture, Mr. Alaboni and Mrs. Scowden. Student success, I have Mr. Dickie, Mr. White.
Caring culture, we have. I say caring culture. Caring culture, we have Mr. Alaboni and Mrs. Scowden. And Mrs. Dunn.
I can't hear three.
I know, but that was.
Oh, sorry, interesting.
Okay, sorry.
We'll go back to that one then. And then, student success, I have Mr. Dickie and Mr. White. And then, resource stewardship, actually, gonna be the facilities committee. That's Mr. White and Mrs. Scowden.
Mm-hmm.
I have communication, I have Mrs. Dunn and Mr. Dickie.
Mm-hmm.
And then, finance committee, I have Mr. Alaboni.
And then, we have three of us that are interested in caring culture. Caring culture, only one other one. You wanna?
Is there one of them that only has one person right now?
Yeah, finance.
Other than that?
No. No, so the only other one that we don't have, two, where we have two people that are interested in caring culture, go and say, and that is really to help implement, help get to one V B past division.
Yeah. I guess with me having both of my kids gone through the school, I've gone through the school, from kindergarten to, I mean, graduated from here, I see a lot of things at all different levels that I would like to see changed to more of a cohesiveness as one V B, from the teachers to the, you know, process and procedure stuff. A lot of things, I feel like, at all different levels, needed. And some of the, some of the things have, have gotten better, but I think with the division of, you know, East theme so far and West theme so far, that there's a lot of things that we can do to, to help try to bring all that together, so, I guess that's why I'd want to be on it.
So people's only on that one and facilities does it right now?
Mm-hmm.
So there's gotta be another one that only has one person other than finance.
Do you have two people for the meeting?
So, I mean, that's student achievement.
Mr. Dickie and Mr. White, I have two there. Finance, I have. I have communication, Mrs. Dunn. Finance, finance, Mr. Alaboni.
Are you interested in another one besides caring?
I, I really like that one. I guess effective student, maybe. Is that the same thing, that's not the same, right? Student achievement, so I'm sure there goes.
Student success.
Students, well, um. No, then maybe communication.
Okay.
I mean, there's five of them, and there's five of us. I think it's supposed to be on two, so if everyone is on two, it shouldn't work out perfectly. There shouldn't be an odd one, there's something wrong. Oh, there's only one on finances.
Because originally, there was only four, not five, not the five.
You take me out on caring culture. And that's what this is, I'm on your place, this is.
Now you're not, you're, now we only, you're on one, Tom.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, it's all in this room. Right. The problem is, we have to get another one of us on finance. I bring nothing to the table as far as.
You don't, you don't need to have.
Well, but I'm saying, if we all want to be on two, otherwise, Tom is gonna be just on the end, unless somebody else is really close beyond that.
I've been on finance, I can't leave on finance, I mean, it's one of those, it's back.
Well, then, you're on three.
Yeah.
That was my, my point.
And you, if he goes on finance, you have to take off, you know, the facilities.
Yeah, if you're on finance, you have to take off either facilities or student success. And that opens up student success for.
Mr. Alaboni? I, I don't mind being on it by myself.
Okay. We all get, we all really need the finances and. My nation, okay, good. We're done.
All right.
Thank you. And now, I need a motion for new business.
Motion to approve consent items as presented two point one to two point five.
Second?
A second.
Yeah, it's your show. Sure. To establish the Board Service Fund, this establishes a fund for the board expenses, so if you attended professional development, if you wanted to have the speaker come in, if you want a professional, has someone come in to do services in your role as board member, this is established, this is funded for you guys.
For the board members?
Yeah. With the, I don't see what that was, no. Okay. For point the cashiers for tuning activity, Council General Fund, this is approved, everyone that pretty much handles the cash in the district, therefore, they're covered by liability insurance since if something should happen, so we've got to prove that.
These are all people who've already been living in already?
Correct, and or, if they have, now, they, they go to the, they're, they ask background check, okay, I checked, to be in the school anyway, and then they just go through this. So then, everyone is covered. And the last one is to, I'm, sorry, third one is a resolution to accept advances in the first and second half, the tax collection from biller county auditors. As you guys are aware, as taxpayers, you pay corporate taxes twice a year. Obviously, they, they send the bills out, you know, one, six weeks later, you have to pay that. In the meantime, I could ask the county to start giving one, a question on Buckeye Valley when they receive it in. So that's what that is. And then, the fourth, the, all right, apologies, is alternative tax budget. The law says I have to tentatively put a budget together for the next fiscal year. Our fiscal year runs from July first to June thirtieth, and I have to give it to the county roughly six months ahead of time. So I put together the, it's called the alternative tax budget, again, this is a, what we think we're gonna be come July first for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. So our fiscal year is how they label them is how they end. So right now, we're in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, because June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, is our last day of fiscal year. So we begin fiscal year twenty-three, July first of twenty twenty-two. So I put this together, I submit it to the board. Once July comes about, this will be modified, and it's modified based on the new values for each fund and according to what the tax rates are for each, for each general fund bond, permanent improvement, and the other student service funds that we receive.
So are we approving the money coming in or spending the money?
Um, this is just, like, you're approving the budget, so ideally, you're, the revenue, here's what I, we think's coming in, here's what I think we're gonna spend, and then we tweak it accordingly.
We tweak it next month, or?
So we won't tweak this one until after July, because this is for the next fiscal year.
We do have a five-year forecast that we'll review in May.
May, correct.
But we're, we're approving something we know nothing about. We're spending all this money, we have no one who. We're spending all this money, we have no one who puts that beginning.
It's based on a five-year forecast that was approved. In November. How, this is different, just as different, dramatically than a five-year?
No, it's based on the five-year forecast.
It's based on?
I've prepared this document based on the five-year forecast. Based off of, like, so the three big funds, or the general fund, which is five-year forecast. The debt service fund, which I know what our debt payments are. So it's based off of that, and then the P I, which again is based off of tax, the county's tax estimates that I receive.
So in approving this, are we approving this? Spending or approving a budget based on the five-year forecast that we just submit to the county?
So the county doesn't get a five-year forecast, the county gets.
Yes, that's what I mean.
Correct. So you're approving, this is what we tend to think our revenue is going to be for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
You take the five-year forecast that we've already approved, put the money in this form because the county needs.
This is the form the county, the county.
And then you remember, this is a forecast. So going forward, every month and every four years, we're going to be approving the expenditures that are going to come up, so. It's not like.
Right.
But this is an outline.
Correct.
We adjust it later.
Correct. For next fiscal year. Yep, that's a good way to put it out there.
All right, any discussion?
Real quick question, why are the, the income and property taxes are essentially dropped in about half?
So I had to break it off by six months for the county.
Okay.
So I take the total for the year and just break it up by.
I see that.
In the last two, the last two years, they went and broke it up in six months.
Of course. I'm good.
Yeah. All right, roll call, Mr. Alboni?
Yes.
Mr. Dickey?
Yes.
Mrs. Dutton? Yes, just Scott. Mrs. Scowden? Yes, Mr. White.
Yes.
Thank you, I need a motion to adjourn. The organizational meeting.
I'm motioning, I move that we adjourn the organizational meeting.
Mr. Alboni?
Yes.
Mr. Dickey?
Yes.
Mrs. Dutton? Yes, Mrs. Scowden? Yes, Mr. White.
Yes. Go right into the next one.
The ride is to the regular meeting.
This is going to be a lot smoother too, I promise.
Yeah, what's written was different than procedure, so. Yeah. All right. Well, that was hard. Need a, we are starting the regular board meetings, six forty-one. Roll call, Mr. Alboni?
Yes.
Mr. Dickey?
Yes.
Mrs. Dutton? Yes, Mrs. Scowden? Yes, Mr. White.
Yes.
Do we pledge allegiance if you know?
No, I don't think so.
No, let's do it again.
Go for it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our. Right, I need a motion to approve the agenda. I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I second that motion.
Roll call, Mr. Alboni?
Yes.
Mr. Dickey?
Yes.
Mrs. Dutton? Yes. Scowden?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
So we need to approve the meeting minutes from December, there's two of us that were actually there. So.
Who we alter?
Well, as, as.
As more members. No, there's one of us that were there, you weren't there.
Oh, the center of the, uh, list.
So everything matches what happened. So then I would move that we approve the attachments upon recommendation of the trailer.
I mean, we're ready to pack it because the board members have to stay over, right? Anyone can second that, right?
Oh, what's that? I'll second it. Read them over, I read songs.
Roll call, Mr. Alboni?
Yes.
Mr. Dickey?
Yes.
Mrs. Dutton? Yes. Scowden?
Yes.
Yes.
And before we start. We will have, just because this is our first meeting, we'll have public participation. This will be very brief, we'll have discussion items, and then we'll have public participation after you heard us all talk. This is the first time we've all been together. We just planned it at the end. And there would be nothing after our discussion that we would be voting on, but this way, public has an opportunity. This way, the public has the opportunity to hear our discussions and comment afterwards before we vote on anything at our subsequent. So if there is. Public comment before new business, which is really about our volunteers or classifieds, if somebody has a comment about that. We raise your hand and we'll make sure that you get a comment card. Right, Jeremy. District update.
Well, January is an exciting time for the district, it's Board of Education Appreciation Month, so. Like to thank Jeff and Amy for their continued support of Buckeye Valley, and then welcome April, Tom, and Donald. To the Board of Education and then serving Buckeye Valley students. Mary put a nice little gift together, I always want to pay credit for it, but Kelly already took credit for it, it was really Mary that did it, so. Thank you, guys, I do appreciate you, Tom, I appreciate all you've done as a board member, and Randy, I appreciate all you've done as a board member of Buckeye Valley as well. So thank you, guys, then next, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Cowper to give us a little update on the Career Center.
Okay, I'm here this evening because three of you are new board members, and I'm the Buckeye Valley rep at the Delaware Area Career Center, the DACC. And two of you are totally new to me, April is not, because I had April as a fourth grader. Many, many years ago, when I was a teacher out at West Elementary. In the old building, and. But, and I'm a graduate of Buckeye Valley, and I taught in this district for thirty-one years. And I retired nineteen years ago, and this is starting my nineteenth year as a school board member here or at the Delaware Area Career Center, so. And before you start thinking, well, what's that old guy doing here? He has no business being that old and being in this, but. I want you to know that I marched with the high school marching band at homecoming this year and my life old age, so halftime and pregame, kept right up with them, so. Anyway, I'm still so excited to be serving on the school board, and I just love it. I just love serving the kids and, and. Anyway, I want to give you a little bit of background of how DACC works and our involvement as a district with that. The DACC is made up of Buckeye Valley, Big Wom, and Delaware City Schools, and Old Chandy Schools. And we are on the tax base, that's our main support for our funding. We also have open enrollment students from Westerville City Schools, and we receive all their state foundation funds. So that's another source of income for us, and we contract with the Worthington City Schools. And that's a sizable contract of other resources, monetary resources that we gain from those schools. Our curriculum course offerings are based on the needs of the workforce of Delaware County and Central Ohio. We have over four hundred professionals, both from small businesses to large corporations, to hospitals, to medical systems. Who serve as our advisory council, and we listen to that advisory council, they let us know where the needs are for jobs. And if there's not a need for something that we are having currently in our curriculum, we will drop a course. And add courses as we feel, as that advisory council tells us where they need more people. We also have satellite programs, one of which has a vocational agriculture program here at Buckeye Valley. And we totally fund that program, including the instructor's salary and other expenses, like if they go on competition trips. We graduate each year approximately four hundred and fifty students from the Career Center. Some can go right into the workforce making lucrative salaries of well over sixty thousand dollars without any additional training. Some of the programs there, they would need one or two additional years of. Some type of technical training, and some of our programs also would require another four years of college. Our coursework range is anywhere from the traditional things that you think of a career center, like trades, plumbing, carpenters, electricians. Auto mechanics, auto collision, we have culinary arts. And some of our newer programs are quite high-tech, we have digital design, we have, we had to hire a second engineering instructor. For our robotics programs, we have app development, many computer-related programs. It's a very professional place, and. I would like to invite especially the three new members to come, and I will help, I would meet you and. Help tour you through the building with our superintendent, so you can see what a state-of-the-art facility it is. You know, it's the big building down around twenty-three South, and. It's, it's a whole new, you know, when I was a young teacher here, and we had the, what we called the J D S. And that had a connotation with it of kind of being like what we called the dregs of society, and they were catching anybody who was maybe hoods or plucking out here in our, our traditional schools. It's no longer that way, it's quite professional, these kids have to qualify for every program they're going into, because. Every program is, has its standards and certification from the state, so. But I would love to guide you through that facility, and. Few years ago, the school board even met down there, one of the evenings, they met, we met early, or you met early down there, and we did a tour. Like at seven o'clock, so you're welcome to do that too, I know that those tentative dates are also tentative with where you meet. Anyway, I truly want to get to know you and just wanted to let you know what an important entity that is for our Buckeye Valley School District. And Jeremy and Amy, that's have my contact information, so. And I would also recommend all of the new board members take advantage of what the Ohio School Boards Association has to offer. I know it should be coming up very soon, they have seminars.
We're all signed up.
Are you signed up for new board member training? It's, it's wonderful, it's valuable information, and it helps, it even flows smoothly, and. Anyway, congratulations to the three and.
You were my favorite fourth grade teacher, by the way.
What, April?
You were my favorite fourth grade teacher, by the way.
There were only two of us.
It wasn't, we're proud of that.
Well, we had that big group, the team teaching. Well, thank you, April, and you know what, April, I'm really proud of you. Who would have thought when I would send you back there as a little girl in my class, that we got here someday, so. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm very proud of you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cowper, thank you, and I can attest, the Career Center is awesome, we look through there, it is a fantastic place and great programming there. Typically, on the update, we'll go with the strategic plan areas, but a little bit different for our first one today, so I just want to give you a, so I see our. Old trainer friends out there, so update our old west building, I believe they have council meeting tomorrow, we'll, we'll attend, and that's, we'll find out about our permit that we're waiting on there. Once we get the permit, we can make plans to move forward on the demolition of the old west. Before I get to my COVID update, there's a packet I gave you, what it has is some. Policies that we need to get updated, so we'll do a first reading next month, but I wanted to give you guys a chance to look at some of those. Pretty non-controversial right now, just some things that OSBA has given to us and suggested that we update. We have our current C R T. Stance and what we've given the staff there, and then hopefully a strategy to get some parents to be able to eat lunch with their kids if they want throughout the buildings. If we can continue to move forward with the pandemic there. So look at those things, send me an email if you have any questions on those, and I'll be able to help you out, but I'm sure that'll help some of the discussion items that you do have. And then next month, we'll get back to our update based on the strategic plan areas, so. I'll go into our COVID update for now. So go along, it's been to do in-person learning, and so far, so good, we did have to shut our preschools down this week to reset, so. East and West preschool will not be in session tomorrow, we'll be back up and running on Tuesday of next week. So we are getting hit there, but as a whole, we seem to be doing okay, our numbers have went up a little bit, we had a couple cases that came out then after I shut this down at one thirty today. But at one thirty, we had nine student cases and two staff positive cases, so those are distributed, one at the high school, one at the middle school. Six at West and one at East, and then our staff members were two at West, I believe we've had another staff member at West. And another couple students that have since confirmed, I'll get that to you guys on the Friday update when I do that. Quarantines, not tracking staff quarantines, because they're essential personnel, so all staff can choose to work if they want to with the mask, they are still able to take their quarantine time if they so choose. But an interesting thing is that we have twenty-five students that are currently quarantined, and these students are quarantining outside of school, so right now. I'll get to the procedures, but any kid that they, they want to can quarantine in school with a mask on, but twenty-five of our students have chosen to do their five days outside of school. And a lot of that is, we have household contacts, and the household contacts have really shown to turn in the cases, so we, the nurses have recommended household contacts to stay home, and twenty-five of them have followed that advice of our nurses. Here's my dashboard, I send you guys, again, the breakdowns in order of what was on there, except this gives us our total quarantines for the year, and then total cases in addition to our current active cases. So we're at twenty-one nineteen total cumulative cases for the year, and then about six hundred and twenty-five students that have been quarantined at some point this school year. This data, this is state of Ohio data, just showing hospitalizations, just some data points that I look at on. Kind of deciding what mitigation strategy we use at the school, so. At zero to nineteen, our school age kids, about three percent of those are resulting in hospitalizations. And then the bottom one is the trend of hospitalizations, and it does look like they're starting to at least level out here the last couple of weeks, so I'm hoping that that's. Good sign for things to come that maybe we'll see in the backend of this pandemic. This is Delaware County, and the. I don't know if my laser will work, but the small blue line there, that is school age kids, and that's showing an uptick of nearly three hundred and fifty students. That have been hospitalized here in Delaware County, so hospitalizations are up, I believe it's doubled since last week and tripled over the last three, three weeks of COVID. But still comparatively speaking, our young kids are doing better with the disease than our older folks. This chart is the community, which is the blue line, up against Delaware County Schools, which is the red line, and then Buckeye Valley point-in-time data, so everything that I presented at the Board of Education meetings are the dots, so if you. See the dots there, that's what Buckeye Valley is at, and the last three times that we've met as a board, we've been fairly stable in our positives, so anywhere between eight and twelve. Active cases, which is a little bit different than the trend that's out in the community, you see the community is kind of. You see the community is kind of skyrocketed there as well as Delaware County schools, but we've been fortunate to, to hold tight. So that is good news here for Buckeye Valley. Again, the new guidance, I mentioned that right now, the Delaware General Health District is recommending a five day isolation for positive case and five days additional wearing a mask at, at school or work. They are recommending that five days at home quarantine and five days wearing a mask at school. However, if students are unable to quarantine at home, they are able to quarantine the full ten days at school if they're asymptomatic and wear a mask. The health department now in Delaware is only tracking cases where they're no longer tracking case contacts. We as a school are tracking case contacts. If we have a positive, the school is the one letting families know that they need to wear a mask for the ten days and when they're returned to, to school being without a mask. And then my recommendation is that, that we continue with in-person learning. It seems to be going well. We have managed the disease at school here. We've had some, some staff positives, but it, it looks like we're able to forge through that with the awesome help of our teachers. We're going to keep focusing on the sanitation of our, our rooms and personal hygiene. Right now, we do have one-way hallways here at the high school and at the middle school. I'd like to continue those until data changes mainly because the high school hallways are, as you guys see, are pretty restricted. When you get seven hundred kids, you're up around a couple of these corners, it gets really tight. As the data changes, we can work with the principals to change that. And just a consistency with the middle school, we, we have that as well since we do share some students. We're asking kids and staff to stay home if they're sick. And although we do not have a mask mandate, we are mask friendly. So if someone wants to wear a mask, they are welcome to wear the mask, staff or, or student. Any questions for me regarding COVID here at Buckeye Valley?
With the one-way hallways, I mean, the, the close contact is considered fifteen minutes of exposure within what, six feet or three feet?
In a school setting, it's three feet.
So even if they're in the hallway passing each other, they're never going to be within that fifteen minute threshold. What a clear benefit is there for policing the hallways and what direction the kids are going?
Right now, it's a logistics thing. It is nice that we do have it right. We bottleneck here if we go different directions. We bottleneck over here at the vending machine and we bottleneck again at the ninety-seven wing. So I know it's not a case contact thing, but it's, it's a logistics thing that, that helps. It's not something.
It's not a COVID thing. So post-COVID, it's still going to be an issue?
And it is an issue logistically, yes, but then there'll be no argument on the COVID part, that there's still some folks that are concerned with COVID regardless of what the Delaware Health Department is doing is that it's three feet and, and fifteen minutes. But we can revisit that. I'm not going to die on that hill, but that is something that has really helped the high school in getting kids in class and getting them, not so much just running into people there in the hallways.
There was one slide too, back before the, the bar graph that had hospitalizations of three thousand four hundred and seventy-four. What, what is the, the date range on that?
That was last week.
That's current?
Yes, that is the, the current, yes. Zero to nineteen off of the Delaware Health Department.
But.
No.
Says Ohio.
Is that, I thought I pulled off the Ohio.
Seems like an awful lot of kids in the hospital.
Lately, they're also on that same chart though, the, there is high hospitalization compared, but ventilation, ventilators are not. So it's, I'm not a doctor, oh, a doctor, so I can't, but there's not the severity that appears. There are still some increase in hospitalizations, but there does not appear to be the severity.
So that's how many kids in the state of Ohio that have been in hospital in the last week?
I'll pull that up and show that to you for sure. Yes, I pulled it off the Ohio. Any other questions on COVID?
I just, I had to get, starting a new year here, we've been chasing this for over a year, but I think a lot of credit goes to our students and staff for self-policing and making sure that they minimize the exposure that they, they're coming across. So I think definitely a big thank you to the community for supporting you. We don't see the numbers, we haven't, I wouldn't say, but we haven't seen the numbers like we've seen other schools, other school districts. So that's a credit to all of you out there in keeping the numbers down. Will we get over one of these days?
You're right. My kids and staff are great. Sometimes it doesn't make sense what we're having them do, but they, they do it, they do it well. The staff does it, they, they make it work, it is, they are, they're a friend. Any other questions, statements?
I had a question about COVID. Does it make sense to turn left and go to your classroom ten feet away or to turn right and to go around the block, walk six hundred feet next to other students? Which one is more able to transmit COVID in your opinion?
Neither of them transmit COVID in my opinion, man.
Well, I mean, if you're walking next to students for six hundred feet or you turn left and go to the classroom that's right here, but I can't turn left right here, I have to go down this hallway, down that hallway, back around and then go to this classroom. Don't you think there's more exposure in walking next to somebody, maybe even looking at them and talking to them while you're walking than to just turn left and you're here at your classroom? I mean, I'd like to recommend, you know, I, I, I was going to bring this up later on anyway, but I'd like to recommend that we have a meeting outside of this to discuss these things and figure out what we agree on so we can make the necessary changes and not just in COVID, but in other areas too.
Tell me.
Can we ask the, the building leaders to explain more about our next, next time we talk about COVID? Put anybody on screen now.
Maybe we could even take a tour ourselves and walk it and figure out.
During the school day?
Well, not, no, not during the school day. Maybe, you know, at a time like this, when there's not a lot of people. So we can see how far you have to go and the potential for spreading COVID versus here I am, I'm already here. You know, the, the teachers are saying, nope, you can't turn left, you got to turn right. But turning, I'm, I'm right here. I'm not going to get in contact with any students versus I'm going to walk next to students for a tenth of a mile all the way around and we're trying to prevent the spread. Just my opinion.
You can do that or? I'm going to, I am going to trust the building leaders to be able to evaluate. I'm not, I'm not an expert in building, so we're welcome to walk it. It's also really interesting to see the high school at class change. It's seriously a sardine. So I think it might make it easier, but I'm going to listen to recommendations from the building leaders if we want to get that next time.
We can walk it that way if you want. So I'm not opposed to anything, but that's my recommendation now, so.
One other quick question. Are students, see, I, I, I thought I heard that students were not allowed to use their lockers. Then I probably saw an email saying that they were able to use their lockers.
I believe the high school's assigned lockers. I believe the middle school after break is assigned lockers and before break, all they had to do was request and they were able to get a lock.
So going forward, they can use their lockers?
Yeah, that's correct.
Which is good. I mean, sorry.
Hundred percent, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? All right, I need a motion to approve the attached financial report.
I move that the Buckeye Board of Education approve the attached financial report at the recommendation of the trainer.
Second, that question.
Just a quick question. This is just a snapshot.
Right, this is just the month. So what the board does, I put together, I, after the month ends, I, I balance to the penny everything that occurred the previous month. Adjustments, reconciliation, I think that was happened accordingly. So what I do is that the top page is the reconciliation page, the second page is some visuals on based off of the budgets that I prepared for the year, where we are, what we estimated, what we actually brought in, revenues and expenditures. And then the third page is pretty much on the left side columns, those are all the columns in the general, on the fiber forecast, how my revenue, how to break out in the fiber forecast. So then I break it out by month and keep pretty much the whole year intact on that last graph, on the last chart. So as of, as of December, for example, we, as of the September thirty-first, we've funded six million dollars for handling property taxes. So I do a month snapshot and then also do where we are versus budget and then also do here's our cash so far this month. I mean, this, this fiscal year.
Compared to previous years?
Uh, compared to actually what I just budgeted for that, previous year as well, but pretty much also where, what I budgeted. Because when I sit down in the summer, I budget because I know obviously some things like property tax link, that they come in certain months, income taxes come in certain months. I know expenditure relatively payables and the cost every single month, health insurance. And so I prepare the budget and I put it into my financial system. And then every month when I run my month of reports, it takes it and compares everything for me of what you budgeted versus what actually occurred.
So this is approved monthly though?
Approved monthly, correct.
Any questions? Roll call?
Ms. Calabuti?
Yes.
Ms. Tiki?
Yes.
Mrs. Duck?
Yes.
Mrs. Scowden?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Need a motion for four point O, new business?
I motion the Suckaway Board of Education to approve set items four point one through four point nine.
Any second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Your show?
I guess so, yes. Nothing out of the ordinary on the new business. So we have a couple of supplementals. Looks like it's faculty managers for high school and then some student help at the high school, online help, volunteers for destination imagination, visions and show choir, classified subs so we can hopefully help with some of the absences that we're having. We have a resignation, one of our close at the high school did resign. One of our teachers had a baby and a statement, they leave for there. We have a donation to the golf team, which is awesome, about five thousand dollars to, to be used for the women's golf team here at Buckeye Valley. Our music department curriculum is there. And then we have some overnight field trips to the middle school, the OSU trip, one to Stone Lab, Lake Erie, sixth grade camp and then the Washington DC trip, which is a combined high school, middle school trip this year.
See, Campody Aqua, the sixth graders.
Yep.
Upper grades of the other.
Stone Lab is seventh grade, I believe, and then Washington DC is going to be eighth and ninth. And the, I don't, I don't want to misspeak, but the Stone Lab typically had to do a science fair project, dissipate and that to, to qualify to go to that, that trip. Any questions for me there?
Is the musical department answer, is that the textbooks that we, we'll be using in the classes or this supplemental term?
That, I believe it's all there, the materials that we're using for their, their new classes.
So it's, it's, it's their textbook?
That's correct, yes.
Because we've never, we've never had a textbook, if I can recall. We've never really approved one. Now maybe you slipped it in the back door.
Well, I'll, I'll get you a copy of this so you can check it out. We can, we can sing next.
I can't read music. It's just freaked in me. That's it. Thanks, thanks for the, here.
And the overnight field trips. We always make sure we have those six staff chat rooms. Any questions, discussion?
I guess I'm just curious how room assignments are assigned. Is it, do the students decide? Do the parents have any input on that? The only reason that I ask is, I don't know if there was a couple of the same sex that were romantically involved and you put them together in a room, unbeknownst to the school and it created cadet? Is there ever potential for something like that to, to take place?
I'm sure there's potential, but I know that administrators have worked through, through that typically you get the pick, they review the assignments and parents are aware of assignments as well.
Excellent.
For sixth grade camp, I can tell you it's, it's a nice building.
Yeah, Campody Aqua is cool.
I think the hotels in Washington, those are all the same too.
Okay.
All right. One call? Ms. Calabuti?
Yes.
Ms. Tiki?
Yes.
Duck? Yes. Scowden?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Now, we've kind of left this open for discussion items, really a chance to discuss our priorities for the next six months. The process that we'll use to address some of these priorities, does it go to facility uses, does that we have executive session? Do we work on it in board meetings? And then how will the board communicate? We obviously have requests for more transparency and so that's another discussion item on how we do that. I just kind of want to hear, I have some obvious priorities. It's going to be, I think number one is going to be the West building to make sure that we have resources to house our kids.
As well as the old West building, the property that's there, figuring out what we're going to do with that as well. Superintendent search.
Yeah, currently filling the superintendent role.
West superintendent, one BB?
One BB. I think our strategic plan, like last year, the, actually started a couple of years ago in 2020, we did a survey of the entire community, all cohorts, parents, community members, students, huge student input. That led into our strategic plan with these overarching goals. And then the building administrators and leaders put a lot of work into breaking those down into like specified action plans, what they're doing in each building to meet them. And the previous board, I mean, I think that was put into place at the beginning of school year and we haven't had the opportunity to review them. I think it'd be a great way for us to get to know each other and to understand this strategic plan, to set up some work sessions to review that strategic plan and a little bit, the specified action plan, a little bit more detail, understand what the buildings are doing. I think that's one. Strategic plan. I think onboarding our new members and getting us to work as a team is a huge priority that will, we can do something, I think we're going to have a lot of opportunities to work together on these things in different work sessions and as an executive session. Could I talk to someone here? I want to make sure. I think the communications is something that we can talk a little bit more about, but it really would be nice if we as a board could maybe after a meeting, kind of send out an update, a summary, in our words, of what we were thinking, what we made decisions, or what are some of our priorities, or something that came out of the meeting, and get them out on the Buckeye Valley Facebook page. Because otherwise, anything that we happen or discussed, it waits for two months until the meeting minutes are approved, before anybody in the public hears boo about, you know, what we're working on, what the district priorities are, and so I think that's a priority I'd like to work on, communications, figure out how to do that legally, I mean, there's some rules, and we can have a coach in to help us with that, to really improve the transparency of the board, would be a goal of mine, if you can. So we've got six priorities, you have some other things?
Yeah, I've got a list that we're going to be adding stuff. That's one of the reasons why I wanted to have a meeting outside of here, of course, everybody is welcome to attend, but I wanted to talk about the hallways, which we talked about a little bit, I'll talk about clarifying the rules for COVID, is someone supposed to be quarantined for five days, 10 days, whenever we feel like it, if we find out five days later, they're supposed to be quarantined, we're quarantining them for some reason, even though the period is over. I'd like to see parents back in school, to be able to see their children in school, to visit the school. I know when we walked through West, we had the issue with paper on the doorways, on the glass, which we want to make sure that the paper is taken off all the doorways, where everything is easy to see, and everything is obvious what's going on, so if one comes into the school and is walking by a classroom, they can look in and see what's going on. I'd like to talk about upgrading the internet, getting fiber for all the classrooms, for all the schools, and being able to have cameras in there, and having the ability for parents to see what's going on in the classrooms, or like, right now, we have 25 kids out in quarantine, how are they learning? They're learning from email? I mean, if they learn from email, why do we have schools? So they need to be able to participate and ask questions, raise their hand, and have that communication with the teacher, and see the other students. So if we get faster internet, we'll be able to put those cameras, they're very inexpensive, it would be a very easy thing to do, and I think if a parent is worried about something going on in the classroom, we can give them a username and password, they can take a look at what's going on, and make sure that they're at ease with what's going on in the classrooms. Obviously the super search. I want to talk about also teacher. I have no problem with a student using a teacher's bathroom if they're in the middle of the transition, or something medically is going on like that, but I don't agree with any kid just walking over to a teacher's bathroom and saying, because of this reason, right now, I need to be able to use it, the teachers need to be able to use those bathrooms. So I think that's a big issue. I want to have cameras in the hallways, people talk about bullying, this is going on, that's going on, I'm being bullied because I'm this, I'm being bullied because I'm that, someone called me this, this is a public school, I mean, this should be all clear stuff, we should be able to see this stuff on camera, somebody got punched, how did they get punched? Where did it happen? Let's see it on camera, let's make sure people are accountable for it. And again, just online learning, make sure that we keep things up, we had online learning last year, and then we said, how many students want to teach their kids at home? And not enough people said me, so we scrapped the whole thing. We didn't think that maybe in the wintertime, COVID might pick up again, we might need it, so now we've got 25 kids at home that aren't learning the way they should be able to. And that's, you know, there's more to come, CRT is a huge thing too, and that's on my website, if anyone wants to see, very simple language, basically saying, nobody is better than anybody else, no one should be treated differently than anybody else, no one should be held accountable for something that happened, but, you know, something that was done by someone before they were born, and nobody is automatically bad just for being born. I think those are very simple things that 100% of people can agree on, but if we agree on this, and there's no CRT issue, then people have to understand CRT is not a real issue, it's a made up issue. People are saying, this party says this, this party says that, we all agree on this stuff, but we're fighting about this, which is what politicians want. This is Buckeye Valley, we don't need to fight about this, let's agree on everything, let's get the standards in place.
I think the best way to tackle a lot of those, that's a, not Paul, going through stuff, and just breaking it down and signing it to committees, with some of that needs more, committee more, and use it into executive sessions, discussion, not so much the public forum, you know, wrestling it around, you know, in the board. I, you know, see that.
Some of these things, like, our role is to make overarching policies, and not so much to make specific rules for each building, we can ask the principals to make recommendations for rules, but some of these things, like, I think we have a anti-discrimination policy that we need to work on, and I think that's going to address what you're wanting to make clear to everybody, and that would be, like, if we pass a resolution, it gets filed with the meeting notes and it's gone. If we have a policy, it's on our board docs, it's public, and the policy, then, we don't say how it's practiced in the school, in each school, we make a policy, and the schools figure out how it's practiced in a way that works with their business. So I think that anti-discrimination policy is something that we should put, that's not a misreading, is it? So that's something that we can tackle as a board. And we don't have a policy committee, but that's one that we could just bring a draft to the board, and we can work on that, and see if we can public comment on that. And I think that's going to address the CRT concerns, that, you know, classic children is, no one's uncomfortable by being who they are.
No one's inferior, or anything like that. You know, the wording that I have, I think you guys all have it now, has been used in other places, the exact wording, it's gone through the legal challenges, and it's been approved, and it's been made it to a lot of some states too, so I think that's a good dive as a starting point.
We'll use our, understood. So I think working on a, maybe prioritizing the anti-discrimination policy, we have to work on it anyway. For online learning and the IT, is that in a strategic plan, specified action plan? I haven't read through a little bit.
So I think it will be looking at the definition of what to be considered as online learning, so having access for students who are absent for an extended period of time is different than having staff dedicated to doing a fully online course, I think just working through those semantics and being on the same page.
Maybe that is just a follow-up. We can talk and update, Cassie can update you more about what our limitations are and currently where you are, you are an IT expert, probably help.
Sure.
Some of these things that are, like, paper on a doorway, are things that any parent, yourself, me, any parent, if they see something that they're concerned about, they would contact the principals, so some of these things, we just let the principals know, and they're specific items that they'll just take care of, unless they're policies. For the bullying, I think that is kind of a strategic plan item, which is one BB carry culture, and that would be something that we could review. Not just cameras in the hallways, like, I 100% agree with you, we want to address bullying, and I think all the middle teams are working on, really bringing people together, and as well as the cameras in the hallways, and they're already all our stuff, so that could be something we would review in a work session.
Yeah, these are all things that can be addressed in the next six months, I would be extremely satisfied, I think everybody out there would be satisfied with that.
So the new and old West, that would be addressed both in, the new West, I'd like to give that to the committee board on, your committee.
There's a lot of moving parts in that, we need to make sure we get them all addressed.
Are you all going, and you're all going to the board membership corner on? I think these are things.
Thing with the West question too, just district growth, trying to figure out what's going on, I mean, this house is popping up here and there, but making sure we don't end up painting ourselves in the corner, get over the panic, especially now, now we're stuck, we'll figure this one out.
Sorry, not to put you on the spot, but do you have a sense of how you'll populate that committee, that's probably the most urgent one?
Once you guys give me the go-ahead, I think I got a pretty good idea of just parents that are going to be directly involved with this, some parents that are in the community.
A lot of people already spoke up and said that they didn't want to be in there.
Right, sounds, but I want to make sure I get the retired person that has been with Buckeye Valley, so I got an idea how I want to do it, okay, with the other committee members who are involved on that, so if it's, if it's, if it's free to do that, or if we say, as long as this is a committee work, I think you can help me, from top to top, let's figure it out, okay, with April and Jeff on getting this sorted.
What's my timeline for?
What?
For what, for the issue? We're open for this year.
I think we should be good for winter this year, and it looks promising for next year, it's not ideal, but I think next year will be very similar to this year, but it is an issue we need to, you guys need to get on with, because I don't, we have multiple years to wait.
So, I just have a general question, the lady who came, I think it was December, and gave the, what, there's this.
You can use your mic if you can hear.
No, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
She's here. The lady who came, I think it was December, who gave the estimate.
Enrollment projection.
Enrollment projection, do we know why she is no longer doing all Tangies?
We do, all Tangi has built so many housing developments that they can now figure that in-house, so they, they have a formula for number of kids per housing development, they've done it so long that they can handle that in-house.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Yeah, she said, their technology actually increased more than her, their ability to do their own, it's because they have that much administration that they can.
And is that company, the same company that the projections were when we built the new West?
Yes.
The projections did, somewhat fell short, because by the time it came time to occupy the West, it was pretty full.
You've been below?
The very first projections she did, we were, she was under, predicted about 3%, since then we've been about 2% under hers, so that, you're right, the initial one, which you guys, not you guys, but the board at that time used to gauge the numbers. But it was, they had to weigh the capacity versus what you can get, so.
And there's not a lot of options as far as companies to do that, there's what to?
She's done all that, or that company has done all of Delaware, so they're very familiar with her, she's done her whole page, and they're, she's different.
I just want to ensure that we get an accurate projection, so that we know what we're looking at moving forward, I don't want to be in a position where you have a new addition or whatever, and then we find out that it's too small.
And I think the plan that we've been going, where we're going every two or three years is good, I think that's what hurt with that initial one, is I don't know how, how big the gap was between doing that, so now that she has six data points, it's going to be more accurate than zero data points when she was starting from scratch.
Got two sewer plants in Oyster River, along, two, on Swan, okay, I'm not pushing at that part.
Strategic, strategic planning, we can set work sessions for that. And for communications, I'd like to be able to bring in the consultant or attorney to help us in one of the work sessions on how we can communicate more transparently as the board. We have use of a, potentially no extra cost attorney through ESC to be able to help with that.
All right. Amy, a couple things I'd like to just add in on the communication, is that we have a really, I think it's a pretty good newsletter.
Yes.
Took a long time to get there, but expand on it, look at ways of expanding on that. We, we had board input on that in terms of board business, but, you know, maybe adding, adding some of that to that. But we didn't have a newsletter five years ago, but took, took a couple people to pull that together, I'd like to see that, keep, continue it, but then make improvements into it, maybe make it all, it's all electronic, that's great, you know, things like that.
I would agree with that, and then the newsletter and the Baron Buzz, that, those are, I've had a couple people, and myself, I guess, a lot of stuff is embedded in there, like, if there's maybe a form or a sign up, that it's sometimes hard for people to actually find, maybe it's just me, but people contact me and says, you know, well, I never got anything about that, well, yeah, I just sent out, and then they have a hard time finding things, maybe it's like, I don't know, embedded within something, you know, another link or something, I guess just maybe, making things a little easier.
Maybe if someone finds something like that, if they could let us know, and we'll work on it for them, and make sure it's big enough and stuff.
Okay. Which I think is a great idea, it just, you know, obviously if you have them improved. Central office?
Yes, we gather that information. We gather that from the building, but then we send it out to the central office, so our goal was to try to get everything into one spot, which I think may be causing some of the confusion that, that some of your books are, I see.
It would be to contact if they find those errors, I honestly, you don't want that kind of stuff coming to a board member, there's a chain of command, and there's someone else that can.
That'd be Cassie, I think we, we prefer to use the Cassie.
Okay, Kathy, sorry.
Sorry, Cassie.
No, we want it to be better, we want it to be a tool people are using, so, please let me know.
Just then have, give them Kathy's email, I'm sure you don't get enough every day if it is.
That's okay, we have room for one more.
So if people find something and they don't know how to get ahold of her, we can get ahold of one of us, and we'll pass it along also, won't feel like it's a dead end.
Set for discussion items?
I think one thing we need to, if we're going to start the superintendent search, is get a committee, a search committee.
We'll, we'll talk about that in the executive session tonight.
You can talk about it tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Any more discussion items, we'll close that. Public participation, if there is anybody who wants to participate after our discussion, we have cards for the corner, if anyone wants to form off, no one has turned it in. All right, and I, we need a movement to go into the executive session. When we reconvene, there will be no vote items, so everybody's free to go after. Okay, oh, we do need, I have a motion this second. It's, okay.
My motion that we go into the executive session for ORC 121.22 to discuss G1, employment evaluation of public employees, and G2, purchase or sale of public property. My second.
All right. Your call, Mr. Alboni?
Yes. Yes.
Is that, yes, Scouted?
Yeah, Mr. White.
Yes.